Testing. Yep. Jerry, my arms. Testing. I'm a little soft, Jerry. Jerry, I'm a little low. Testing, testing, testing. Thank you. I think this is good. Ready to go? Good evening. I am opening the second session of the May 7, 2013 Stowe Annual Town Meeting. Thank you for coming. We don't have a big crowd tonight. Hopefully, we will get through the remaining articles tonight. First slide, please, or next slide. I'm guessing most of the people here tonight were here last night. I'm not going to go through all of the issues or all of the introduction I did yesterday. Please remember to mute or turn off your phones or other devices. Next slide, please. Just like last night, if we end up around 10:30 and we still have things to do, I will ask if we wish to continue. Hopefully, we will be done tonight. Next. Again, next slide, please. Thank you. I think we got ahead. One more slide.
What was the next one?
The next one was Cast of Characters. We don't need the slides. Again, my name is David Wallerath. I'm the elected town moderator. Our deputy moderator that I nominated in the town meeting confirmed last night is Gary Horowitz. He may run town meeting for two or three articles tonight so I can get a quick break. I don't know if Liz Painter is here, but she may serve as assistant moderator. Behind me, we have the town clerk Linda Hathaway and her assistant Kay Desmond. I'm not going to go through the other boards. The selectmen are in front of me. The finance committee over here. Over here, we have capital planning. Towards the front over here, we have the planning board and the Stowe Municipal Affordable Housing Trust will weigh in on a couple of articles tonight. Next slide, please. We have one additional town voter that we were -- I mean, non-voter that we were asked to be able to have address the meeting. Nick Fezandola, sorry if I'm mispronouncing that. I'll take a -- we have new cards, so please, if you ended up with one from last night, we'll only count the yellow cards tonight. All in favor of allowing him to address the meeting on Article 42. Any opposed? I'll call that unanimously in favor. Next slide, please. Again, I'd like to thank the town meeting volunteers and staff for doing a great job. Next slide. And again, please remember in debate, when you come up to one of the microphones, please --
That was it?
That was it? Okay, well, I had a debate slide. No big deal. Please remember --
That was it?
That was it up there? Okay. Please remember to show your card, introduce yourself with your name and the street that you live on so that we know who you are. And that's it that I had for introduction. I believe we can go directly to Article 36.
Mr. Moderator, I move at the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $60,000 from the Community Preservation Fund Reserve for historic preservation purposes to be extended under the direction of the cemetery committee in consultation with the Historical Commission -- with the Historical Commission and Community Preservation Committee for the reconstruction and rehabilitation of stone walls at Brookside Cemetery and Hillside Cemetery.
I think we're losing volume on that one, Jerry.
Hello.
So we have a motion in a second. Do we have --
Hello?
I believe the planning board has a recommendation on this. Do we -- is this 36? I'm sorry, it doesn't. Oh, no, I did have Steve, you giving a recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, I'm capital planning, not the planning board.
I'm sorry, planning.
Capital planning is in favor of this article. This continues the stone wall restoration work that we did at the Lower Village Cemetery a couple of years ago that came out so well.
Thank you. If I could ask Steve to stay up there and maybe adjust the microphone a little bit. Do we have a recommendation from the finance committee, please?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee is in favor of acceptance of this article. The funds appropriated for the project come from the dedicated Community Preservation Historic Fund and therefore will have no effect, or impact rather, on the tax rate.
Thank you. Is there any further -- are there any questions or further debate on Article 36, on the motion under Article 36? This requires a majority vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed, please raise your cards. I will call that unanimously in favor, passing Article 37.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept without charge or cost from the Stowe Community Housing Corporation or its successors or assigns per NSCHC. A 15-foot-wide, non-exclusive easement along West Acton Road and Boxborough Road in Stowe, Massachusetts, located substantially as shown on the plan prepared by Ducharme and Dillis Civil Design Group, Inc., called, entitled, "Plan of Easements," dated April 3, 2013, for the future installation of a sidewalk by the town or its assigns, it being understood that the town or its assigns shall have the sole responsibility to fund, construct, and maintain a sidewalk within the easement should the Board of Selectmen, in their exclusive judgment and in the best interest of the town, choose to construct the same.
We have a motion in a second. Mr. Sarno from the finance committee?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends approval of this article.
Thank you. Is there any questions or debate on this article? This article requires a two-thirds vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed, please raise your cards. I will call that unanimously in favor. Clearly, in excess of two-thirds, so it passes. Article 38. We have a -- can we bring up the slide, Mike? Mr. Kern?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 38 as written in the warrant, except that the last clause within 10 years of passage of this article by town meeting shall be replaced with within eight years of passage of this article by town meeting.
So I think Mike is correcting it. It was -- Okay, so this is, if you could underline the change down at the bottom. It did say 10 years. Now it says eight years in that last clause. Now, if anyone wants the selectmen to read that, it would give me -- it would give me great enjoyment to require them to do some remedial reading. Or if you believe that it's -- that this isn't clear, we can seriously ask them to read it, but we thought that it would be an advantage on some of these articles to just give you the change and otherwise as in the warrant. Is there any objection to that? Seeing none, we can go forward to the presentation. Pardon?
Do you have a question?
No presentation for 38?
No, we have 38, 39. We're going to take together. I can present together and we don't have to vote on the other.
I understand, but 38 has been moved, so if someone wants us to give a presentation, now's the time.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Mike Upchance. I'm the chair of the Municipal Housing Trust in town. We wanted to go -- next slide, please. We wanted to just review quickly where we are, very briefly with one slide. And the objective that we've had all along with within the Affordable Housing Trust as charged by the selectmen is to gain control over future development in town by achieving the 10% subsidized certified affordable housing. And we've, in 2011, we submitted, we completed and then submitted, the Board of Selectmen actually submitted to the Department of Housing and Community Development, a housing production plan that laid out for the next five to 10 years what our strategy in town was to increase the amount of affordable housing to try to approach the 10% goal. In last year, we did a number of activities to support some of the projects that have been proposed in town for, by, for instance, the SCHC that we discussed in the previous article. And we also acquired part-time professional assistance of a housing specialist, somebody who had the expertise to actually move some of the things forward that a volunteer board just can't. It's a very highly technical, affordable housing is a very highly technical field and we needed just more experience and more professional help than we could muster ourselves. And so now, this year, we're executing against those plans and using the resources we have. And the three things we're trying to do are, again, to, like, for instance, in terms of the SCHC, the Stowe Community Housing Corporation, we're enabling and assisting private affordable housing development efforts. And in, as we stated in the housing production plan, we're first going to explore town-owned parcels and whether, and we've, through a number of committees, we had the land use task force and we had the housing partnership before the trust was involved, to go through and look at all the town-owned lands and see which ones are even feasible, even possible to actually build housing on. And we've, the two that we've, that we've come to that have the best chance are the two that we're asked, that are being discussed in Articles 38 and 39 tonight. And the third part is that as other parcels become available, and that could, for instance, be the 323 Gray Road, if we decide not to move forward with a fire station, there may be the ability to do affordable housing on that one and we'll assess those parcels as they become available. Thanks. So in December, we get to the, to the selectmen and said, we wanted to define the procedure for how a parcel that is town-owned and under control of the selectmen would move to the control of another, of another entity, in that, in this case, the housing trust. So we set out a series of steps, and we've done the first few, and now we're at the number eight, where we're, the town meeting is going to decide whether to change the use and grant control to the housing trust. And there's, and there's a couple of reasons. Over the next couple of slides, I'll try to lay out why this is important. So why are these articles necessary and what do we hope to accomplish with them? Well, first is that before spending town funds to do engineering studies on these, on these parcels, it's prudent to have control first. If you think about it the other way, we would, could spend thousands of dollars and then still have to go to the town, and the town would say, no, no, we don't want to, we don't want to put affordable housing there. So we want to get the mandate that, yes, these type of parcels would be, if it's feasible, it's one of the things that the town would consider. If the town doesn't consider it, then there's no sense in spending money on it. So it's prudent to do that beforehand. Also, these engineering studies are determined, we are necessary to determine even if it's feasible. We don't, you know, from our best professional consultant's advice, we believe that it's possible, but we need to do the full studies and spend some money to figure that out. So then, if these, these parcels are buildable, there will be no legal impediment to further development, except for the normal permitting things we should talk about in a moment. And the other really important part is, if we're going to try to apply for any loans or grants or any assistance from anyone else, control of these parcels is necessary. So this is, would be important funds, sources of funding. So next slide, please. Thanks. So what will the development look like is the question we get asked a lot, and also, will there be public input? And so at this point, because we don't know if they're even buildable, we don't know how many units would be possible, how many bedrooms in terms of perk tests and those kind of things, there are no specific proposals at this time. There's, it's just not possible. But when, as things move forward and it becomes, yes, those engineering studies show that, yes, that housing is possible, the usual permitting applications and the usual meetings and the, and the, everything that would normally go in to applying for a permit would be required here. And there's no, just because it's a, the housing trust is a committee of, or a committee of the town, there's, all the rules, normal rules would apply. Indeed, public input would be not only solicited but be welcome because the, part of the point here is, if the town is going to be a party to this, we want to build the kind of units that the town is going to be proud of and that is going to be a model for other type of affordable housing units that we'd want to build in town. So it's, it's going to be something, it's going to be a very open process, and that's, that's our goal, as opposed to, we're not trying, you know, it's not like we're trying to build some units that we don't know about, that the rest of the town doesn't know about. And of course, we'd have to go through the normal things about, you know, water and septic and all the regular things that we do. So the next couple of slides are talking specifically about these, these two parcels. There's, the first one is 22 Queens Lane. It's a very small parcel. It's a little over a third of an acre. It's an infill development, and as was in a survey that took place for the master plan a couple of years ago, the town was very clearly in favor of infill development as opposed to building large developments with hundreds of units that would all be affordable. The idea was to spread them out throughout town and infill in, in empty spaces or in smaller, smaller locations. The second, the second parcel is on the corner of Pine Point and Sudbury Road. It's been, in, it was a tax taking from 1960, and it was the deed, actually, it's been, it was April 22, 1963, so a little over 50 years it's been in the town, town-owned and under control of the selectmen. And it's a very challenging lot. There's, it's very steep, there's a lot of ledge, and so we're not certain that anything more than a few bedrooms, two or three or four bedrooms would be possible here, both in terms of perk tests and just the amount of upland that's available and that's not ledge. It's a challenging site. But we're not going to really know how, whether it's possible until we invest some money to see whether these, you know, it's even possible. So. Thank you, Ms. Moderator.
Thank you. Do we have a recommendation from the finance committee?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee is in favor of acceptance of this article. This town-owned parcel will be evaluated by SMART for suitability and feasibility for affordable housing.
Thank you. I believe the selectmen had a recommendation on this one, correct?
The selectmen, a majority of the selectmen recommend voting in favor of this article.
Thank you. Could we bring the, the motion back up? So, debate. Yes, ma'am.
Now it's too tall. Surely, there's a middle ground. Great, great. Margie Lynch, Boxborough Road. And I just wanted to praise the housing trust for bringing forward some substantive steps for our community to move forward with community-based development of affordable housing. I think it's really exciting and it seems like a prudent and well-considered course, the whole, the whole bundle of proposals, though I do have a question around one of the articles. I was fortunate to live in affordable housing in a more unaffordable community than Stowe. I was working for nonprofit organizations in that town. My neighbors were teachers and sheriff's deputies and service workers in the community, and it was a real great, great way for all, all of us to support the community and to live in a place we were excited to live in. At the same time, I was able to build some equity from the payments I made on my home, and it did appreciate a modest amount, which then gave me a foothold for moving on into market-rate housing at a later point in time. So I just wanted to speak in favor of this article and again, acknowledge the progress that's been made in the past few years.
Thank you. Over here.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Tom Sada, 25, Queens Lane. I understand that you haven't had the, the time to evaluate the lot that you're looking at on Queens Lane, but I really think it would be prudent for you guys to take a look at it before you invest any more money into evaluating it. It's an extremely small lot, as you saw, very substandard lot according to the town bylaws. I've heard that you're going to put two, or try to put two houses in there. That's just incomprehensible to me and to all the other neighbors on Queens Lane. What I would rather see you do is to use that as an open lot, maybe as a town-open lot. Leave it alone, if there's any way possible of doing that. It's an extremely small area. My other concern is, my well is within five foot of Queens Lane. I took a measuring tape, went over to that lot. I'm 35 feet away from it. So common sense would tell you that's not going to work. So I really think you need to do a little bit more legwork on this before you even give it to a committee to look at. And I do have a couple of other questions, if that's all right, or, okay?
If we could take, if you made a comment, if we could take one person, or actually allow, did you want to answer that first question?
Just one thing is that there, the most that would be, would be possibly one unit with two bedrooms because of the size of the lot. And our first pass without professional work is that the, the septic and the water would work, and it would be pretty, pretty close. And that's why we need to, so at first pass, what we do without a professional assessment is that it would work, and that's why we would need to get a professional assessment.
Thank you. Over here, and then we'll go back.
Peggy Orlando, 7 Queens Lane. Tom's my neighbor. I have the same concerns that he does. The lot is really small. I know his well and our neighbors, I think, I see the pifers over there is right across the street from that. We just had people in our backyard looking at our wellhead because they're selling the house across the street and they need a septic replaced. So they were saying that it's very, very tight. I just don't see how that's going to be accomplished with this. The other issue I am concerned about is it's very sandy soil. When we had our well drilled, we had to have casings completely down. It was a very expensive well to drill. We had to put a $5,000 system in for cleaning the water, has high radon, high manganese. The other issue is the location. One of the issues that is always brought up with affordable housing is transportation. This is out, you know, it's not really near any public transportation at all. I know they complain about that at the Pilot Grove and stuff, you know, so we're even further out than that. I guess I would have preferred with this article to come, I know that you say you can't do this, but I would have preferred to say it's a, you know, one-room house, or one, one-story, you know, small house for two people, but that doesn't say that. And, you know, it's going to be eight years that we're going to have to watch. The vague wording in here is for the purpose of developing and managing housing affordable to low and moderate-income families. That can be anything from a, a nice, what you call friendly 40B, to a three-story apartment. So I'm hoping that you guys aren't going to put the three-story apartment in, but I don't think I can support it with the vague wording here, so.
Thank you. Back over here.
I am for affordable housing in Stowe. I think it's very necessary, and I agree with the woman here. I do agree with the good progress that we've made in the town so far.
Thank you. Back over here, you had another question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. One of my concerns, too, is I think you're looking at this as a financial advantage for the town. I don't know how that's possible. I mean, all it takes is a family with one child, and it's going to cost thousands and hundreds of thousands of dollars to put that child through, first, one through 12. The amount of taxes you're going to recoup from that doesn't even come close to paying for it. And I guess overall that I'm opposed to this just because of the size of the lot, the location of the lot. And again, a good point was brought up about transportation. Nobody, nobody talked about this, but it is a dirt road. All, everybody in the neighborhood knows that. We all accept that. Nobody complains about it. What we don't want is have somebody else come in there and have the expense of having to pave the road. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, Doug Moffett, Harvard Road. I think it's very appropriate that we should build more affordable housing in this town. I think there's also a state mandate that we're supposed to have a certain number of affordable units in the town, right?
Well, I mean, there's a, there's a 10% limit that if we reach that, then we gain control again over our own zoning. But below that, we, we're susceptible for 40Bs.
Yeah, it sort of armors us against 40B developments and stuff. And I wondered, how close are we to that 10%? Because there's a Pilot Grove 2 development going in that I understand is all affordable, and so I was thinking that put us pretty close to that.
We're at 5.89 right now, and I think we're close to eight with the, with the two, with both developments, with Pilot Grove 2 and Plantation 2. And so we'd still be about 20 or 30 units short of the 10% after those two. But that number should be in place for the next 10 years because that was a 2010 service. So we'll probably have a good, at least eight years of, of that being the, the number, so.
Thank you very much.
Sure. If I, Mr. Moderator, if I might, I just, there's two things I just want to say about the, the size of the lot and, and the, and the logistics and the engineering. Simply, if it can't be done, it can't be done. And if we can't put a unit there, then we won't put a unit there. And we're not going to build, well, certainly, I can almost certainly say we're not going to put a three-unit apartment building there or a three-story apartment building because it is a third of a lot, and there would be too many bedrooms for that. So this would be a very modest-sized thing, and, but it was, it would be impolitic for us to, before we actually do the engineering study, to specify what this project would look like. So essentially, what we're asking for is kind of a procedural matter here to say, town meeting, will you allow the housing trust to explore what the possibilities are on these two parcels? And then, and then, given that, there'll be many opportunities in the permitting process to go back and ask and to get input, and we want to solicit. It's not something that somebody's going to try to slide through because this is us. It's us. This is our, this is our town, and we all work together on this, and that's what we're going to do. The idea wouldn't be to try to slip something by anybody. It would be to get input from everybody and make something that everybody can live with.
Thanks. Mr. Sada over here.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jim Sada, 218 Hudson Road. I know the area there very well. It's a terribly small lot. And, and I shall bring this up. The people on Lake won't pay a premium in property taxes. It's for the privilege of living on the lake. And I, to disturb that road is a dirt country road, and the only transportation in town is the COA, so it's, it's not for a family unit. And the other thing I wanted to bring up was, you've got two projects in town, other than Pilot Grove and, and up on the hill. Are we getting any low income from these projects that are in, in the planning stages now?
From, from Pilot Grove and Plantation?
No, from the one on, on, oh, down off of Hudson Road. Walcott Street is a...
That would be the planning board that would be able to answer that.
Yeah, we'd have to have the planning board on that. That's, that's still in, in way early stages.
And there's one in progress up off of West Acton Road. Did we get any?
The, the one, West Acton Road, the one that crossed from my house?
Yeah.
I think that's only five units, so it's not included in Queens.
Not included, okay. But I know we passed a resolution that we will get, any developer comes in, it's got to set aside so many.
After, after six units.
After six units.
This isn't a discussion, so.
Okay. But anyway, I, I don't think it's a good spot for, for a house, and I thank you.
That would be the planning board that would be able to answer that.
Yeah, we'd have to have the planning board on that. That's still in way early stages.
There's one in progress up off of West Acton Road. Did we get any?
The one, West Acton Road, the one that crossed from my house? I think that's only five units, so it's not included in Queens Mary's area.
Okay. But I know we passed a resolution that we would get, any developer comes in, it's got to set aside so many...
After six units.
After six units.
This isn't a discussion, so.
Okay. But anyway, I don't think it's a good spot for a house, and I thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Sada. Over here.
Hi, Adam Wykman, North Shore Drive. So I just had a couple of questions about the process. So if...
Could you get closer to the microphone?
I'm sorry, I just had a couple of questions about the process. So I heard some concerns the parcel is small. I'm just wondering what happens if you do your professional assessment and you determine that it can't be built on or it wouldn't fit a septic? I mean, it says here it would be eight years before it goes back to the town if, like, if you approved it and no one decided to build. What if you decide 30 days from now that no one could ever build there?
The writing of the article is such that it's uphill for it to go away from the selectmen, but it's a downhill slide for it to go back to selectmen. So if, the trust would have no interest in maintaining control of the parcels if they're not buildable, and essentially we would cede control back to the, back to the selectmen.
Okay. And another, just sort of, this is just my ignorance on how the affordable housing will work. So, I mean, will the, how does the town, does the town lease the land to the developer?
I'm sorry, could you get closer to the microphone?
I'm sorry. Does the, will the town be leasing the land to the developer? Does the town have liability for things built on it? And, you know, how does the home get assigned to someone?
There are a number of ways that...
Excuse me. Is, you know the answer to that?
Yes.
Okay, then.
Nope, sorry, I should have adjusted to you.
Sorry, right, great, yes.
I was going to pass it to Town Council.
All right, fine.
But that's fine, if you can answer it.
Well, there's no, essentially, that it's completely unknown at this point. There are a number of different ways that that could happen, and it would all be a matter of negotiation, and there would be ground leases, there are outright sales, there's, so there's scenarios where the town would retain ownership and just the house would go to an owner that would be sold to a developer, and there's also ways where the town itself would be the developer. And it would all matter about, none of that is known at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further debate on this issue? Seeing none, this article requires a two-thirds vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed, please raise your cards. All in favor, please raise your cards again. I will call that clearly in excess of two-thirds, so the motion under Article 38 passes. Article 39. Mr. Ryan.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 39. Now come on, where'd you go?
I have the wrong one here.
I had it.
It's the same as 38 if you use the simplified version. I think you're getting one.
I've got it. Mr. Moderator, I move Article 39 as written in the warrant, except that the clause with, within 10 years of the passage of this article by town meeting shall be replaced with, within eight years of passage of this article by town meeting.
So we have a motion and a second. Finance Committee. Mr. Eckle, I believe.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee is in favor of this.
Thank you. I believe the selectmen also wanted to make a recommendation on this article.
Last night at a meeting of the Board of Selectmen, a majority of the board supported this article.
Thank you. Any questions or other debate on this article? Seeing none, Mr. Hawks, are you going to the microphone?
Don Hawks, on Dawes Road. A particular item on this one as opposed to the other. I know it was mentioned that Queen Lane, Queens Lane is in the proximity of Lake Boone. This one is directly across the street from what used to be Hanson's Beach. Some of you who've been around for a while remember that. And given its particular topography and the ledge, and I've heard everything that has been said by the proponents of this article about nothing will happen until further studies and permits are done. But for years, we who are fortunate enough to live at the lake have been dealing with problems of utrification, which is a fancy word for turning into a swamp, as was mentioned last night. And that is aggravated by years of development of what are now substandard lots surrounding the lake. And my concern in this particular location, having just voted in the affirmative on the other one, is that anything that is, might be done there, even though through permits, is going to increase some degree of runoff. You have a septic system that will have to be put in there very close to the road. Everything is uphill from there, and I'm just concerned of effluent and runoff adding to a problem that we pay every year to try to keep under control, that is, the weed growth in the lake. And therefore, I am, while I am in support of the overall goals of affordable housing throughout the town, I do not believe that this lot is an appropriate site for those reasons.
Thank you. Any further debate on the motion under Article 39? Seeing none, we can proceed to a vote. Like the previous article, this requires a two-thirds vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed, please raise your cards. I'm going to ask all in favor to raise your cards again. I will call that in excess of two-thirds, so the motion under Article 39 passes. Mr. Selvi, I think, do we have a motion for Article 40?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate from available funds the sum of $10,000 to be expended by the Board of Selectmen or the Stowe Municipal Affordable Housing Trust for the purposes of contracting with a consultant to obtain affordable housing-related services, including but not limited to monitoring services and/or the creation and preservation of affordable housing for the benefit of Stowe residents. And further, that the town, acting through its Board of Selectmen, be authorized to enter into an intermunicipal agreement with nearby communities for the purposes of procuring such services regionally.
We have a motion and second. Mr. McManus, I believe, from the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends approval of this. Funds will allow Smod to hire a consultant to address local issues and to begin to regionalize some services.
Thank you. Did you have a presentation? Sorry. So Mr. Kepchinsky?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Right now, the town is in the position of where really, we really don't have a monitoring agent for current affordable units. And that means that if there was a foreclosure or if there's other untoward incidents for one of our current units, there's really, there's no agent that is, stays on top of that. Also, it's very useful for us to have a database of people who might be potential eligible buyers for affordable housing. So if a unit does become available, it doesn't become a long protracted search for someone who's eligible. So there's a number of towns locally that are forming a regional group to be able to share these services for monitoring, et cetera, and it's, it's a relatively small amount of money for us to be able to do this. And it will also, part of this will be creation of a database that we'll be able to use from now on, so that is going to be a slightly larger dollar amount this year, and we'll have a smaller amount in the future because that database will already exist.
Margie Lynch, Boxborough Road. Mr. Moderator, a question, are these services eligible for community preservation funds?
That's a good question. Do we have anyone from Community Preservation Committee that could answer that? Mr. Kepchinsky, can you answer?
I think under the, probably if someone was here from CPC would be better, but from our conversations with them, this is the kind of expenditure that, under the statute, would be allowed. However, that the way the CPC has worked in Stowe in the past has been really around project-based or specific projects and not this type of ongoing administrative type of expense that would go on for, you know, for multiple years. And in talking with the town administrator, I don't know if Bill, if you had anything about it, but thought that it was more appropriate, as this was perceived to be something that would be ongoing, that it was more appropriate that this be for the town. Plus, the town is going to be entering into a services agreement, and it probably was just cleaner if it was, if it was town funds.
Thank you. Yes, sir, over here.
Dave Kinistraro, Taylor Road. Two questions, is what's moderate income in this town? And second of all, does affordable housing, is it, is it Stowe residents first? Does it go outside of Stowe? Are we paying money to do things in Stowe for outside people, or is it we're doing it for the benefit of our residents?
I, I believe that depends on the project, but Mike, if you could address that.
The first, in terms of what the dollar amounts, the low income, as I believe, 50 to 80% of the average, of the area median income, and we are in the Boston area, and so I think the median income is in $64,000, something like that. And then, in that, in that area, I mean, that translates to, for a two-bedroom house, about $200,000 or $210,000. And it is, it varies a little bit in terms of interest rate, in terms of the year-to-year AMI and some other factors, but that's roughly where that is. And some programs, there is a local initiative program, the LIP program, which does give a preference to local residents, but they're actually, it's not exclusively for Stowe residents. It's for, it's for, it's for regional folks who meet the eligibility requirements.
Yes, sir, over here.
Again, Dave Kinistraro. So actually, we're expending all this affordable housing money from our taxes for people outside of town. Well, I mean, that's what you're saying, isn't it?
Well, it could, possibly, but the real benefit for town, for the town, is to gain control of our own zoning. If we reach 10%, and the effort, not only is 10%, but if we show incremental progress year-to-year, it allows us to retain control over zoning for new developments. And as building begins now, as you see, the economy's recovering, and there's going to be more building over the next few years than there have been the last few years, having control over our own zoning is, I think we can agree, is, would be a nice idea.
That would be a nice idea, but I don't like spending my tax money for people who don't live in Stowe. I live in Stowe, pay my taxes in Stowe, my friends are in Stowe. I don't want people from out of town let their towns pay for their affordable housing and live in their towns.
Well, I would, I would submit that as soon as they move to town, they would be in Stowe.
Is anyone else wish to speak to this article or ask a question? Seeing none, we can proceed to a vote. This requires a two-thirds vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All opposed. I will call that as in excess of two-thirds, so the motion under Article, the motion under Article 40, why did I, well, passes, actually. It should have been a majority vote. But either way. Article 41, Mr. Burnclos.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court for an act to remove from protection pursuant into, pursuant to Article 97 of the Amendments to the Massachusetts Constitution for the sole purpose of permitting the town and/or its authorized agents to construct and operate a public water supply together with pertinent structures, transmission lines, systems, and facilities to support said public water supply. A portion of a certain 17.69 acre parcel necessary for construction of said public water supply identified in a deed in the Town of Stowe Conservation Commission and recorded on May 8, 2008 at the Middlesex South Registry of Deeds at Book 28554, page 427, as Parcel A1, as shown on a plan of land entitled Elizabeth Brook Farm, Stowe, Massachusetts, Definitive Subdivision Plan, Planned Conservation Development, parent PCD, prepared for commons development, Westford, Massachusetts, dated December 1996, revised February 20, 1997, scale 1 inch equals 60 feet. Said plan recorded with the Middlesex South District Registry of Deeds as Plan Number 420 of 1997. And, with the exception of the permission granted to develop a public water supply together with pertinent structures, transmission lines, systems, and facilities to support said public water supply, and consistent with General Law, Chapter 40, Section 8C, require that the Conservation Commission and the Town of Stowe observe and comply with the conservation purposes imposed and intended by the above noted deed recorded at Book 28554, page 427, on May 8, 2008, and, once approved by the General Court, to authorize the Board of Selectmen, without any further action by the Town of Stowe or its employees, officers, boards, departments, or commissions, to grant of a license, easement, or both to a third party for the construction and operation of the above noted public water supply, if deemed by the Board of Selectmen in their sole judgment to be appropriate and necessary, and in the best interest of the Town of Stowe.
So we have a motion and a second. I believe that the motion is identical to what's in your warrant. I had suggested last night just moving it as printed in the warrant, but, okay. But it is as printed in your warrant. Is there any, any debate on Article, on the motion under Article 41?
Presentation.
Do we have, I'm sorry, do we have a presentation? Thank you. Mr. Copas, I believe, was going to present from the Conservation Commission. My apologies to the folks that were getting up. Ingaborg is...
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. My name is Ingaborg Hegeman Clark. I'm the Chair of the Conservation Commission. Mr. Copas had to travel out of town. So we have a very short presentation. Okay.
It helps if you move close to the, to the microphone.
Thank you. Okay, it's coming. All right, good. Is this better? Okay. So Heritage Lane was constructed in the late 2000s. It's, you can see where Great Road is. Heritage Lane comes off of White Pond Road, and it abuts Bradley Lane, so I think you all know where you are. The said Parcel A1 is the larger parcel that is around the subdivision. This land came to the Conservation Commission as a result of a planned conservation district, which means that they could develop these houses in a smaller clustered type of development by allowing this open space. Over the course of several years, the south part of Lower Village has repeatedly expressed in an inability to develop or expand any operations there as a result of lack of water. So the town has been pursuing this and looking at various alternatives. Next slide, please. And there was an extensive alternatives analysis done. There was discussion with linear retail across the street. There was discussion, a lot of different alternatives were looked at. And so this article seeks to allow for the development of public water supply on public land. This is a conceptual plan. This article would allow some welling, drilling to identify whether the well is legitimate or really will work. And it is a land use that's compatible with open space. We can go to the next slide, please. So the two processes that we're looking at are, one, legal feasibility, which is in part this town meeting action, and then technical feasibility, which is all the permitting. So the legal feasibility is this article, a vote in favor, would allow a public water supply to be placed on the public land, would open up the current public land for an additional use. It would then have to go to the state legislature for approval as well. If all those pass, then the well operator, a proposed well operator, would have to come to the Conservation Commission for work in adjacent to a wetland resource area, would also have to go through the Board of Health, and it would also have to go through DEP well drilling evaluation, and the process there... evaluation. And the process there is that you'd have to ensure that no private wells are altered, or that no water is, wetlands are drained or dried, or that the river is affected in any way. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there, now we can open for debate. Ms. Lynch.
I guess tonight's my night to make a lot of comments. Margie Lynch, Boxborough Road. Mr. Moderator, I had a couple of questions and then a comment. My question is, the warrant doesn't specify the quantity of land that is being requested for this. Is there further information that can be provided to us on that?
Can you answer that?
I can't answer that at this point. I think that the first thing that has to be done is it has to be tested to see what kind. Obviously, the area that has to be controlled is what's called the Zone 1. The Zone 1 has to fit, and this is why there's a conceptual Zone 1 on the land. The intent is to have the well in the northern part of the site, but at this point, without actually knowing, I can't answer that question. I don't know if anyone else can at this point.
Thank you. Second question, is there not a trail easement, or trail that goes through that area right now? And would that access be maintained if this water supplies was to go in, was to go in?
There are trails on the property. At this point, I don't know how the well would affect those trail systems. The intent is that the use is not incompatible, that the two uses can coexist. But those are good questions that could happen as part of the permitting process.
We're going to take someone behind you first. Couple people are in line.
I'm John San Germano, Taylor Road. My, my question was actually very similar to the previous speaker. There is a trail that, that parcel is very dear to me. I think I was on Concom when we got that PCD parcel. I made the trail, the sign, the bridge, and have looked after it. So a strong concern is to not lose that, that trail. The trail allows you to get from Gardner Hill Parcel or the Memorial Field Parcel to a shortcut to Heritage Lane. It's, it's a useful connection that will be enhanced when we have more asset wildlife refuge. So the, the language is in the article that says to maintain, comply with conservation purposes. So, so I would just, just want to make sure. The concern would be that somehow that would be cut off. It is a narrow parcel. It's, it's shown there as flat, but really, it's got a limited up and then it'll sponge it down. That's all.
Mr. Moderator, I got some more information on the trail.
Sure. Go ahead.
So trails are a compatible use in a Zone 1, so that should be maintained.
Thank you. Over here.
Mr. Moderator, Steve Duncan, West Acton Road. Just to make sure we're okay here. I want to speak in very strong support of this article, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members should understand some of the perspective on, on the issue of water in Lower Village. I was a proud member of the original work group that the town administrator put together, I believe it was 2006, give or take, 2005. So we are now eight years later, and we're still dry as a bone on the south side of 117. This article will at least accomplish the, the impact of having a study done to make sure we can use the site safely. But in addition, the expense of the work is going to be shouldered by a consortium of business people in town, not the Town of Stowe. In the past, all the options we looked at would have been funded by, by taxpayer dollars, including very expensive piping to run water from a remote site to Lower Village. This is a great option to pursue, and we'd be amiss if we did not pursue it aggressively. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lynch, I believe you had a comment.
One final question, and then my comment. Last question, Mr. Moderator, is what mitigation would be proposed for us, in effect, giving up this land for a different, for pulling it out of conservation restriction?
Is there a land swap requirement under this? For, if we pull something completely out of conservation, I understand there's a land swap. Would this require that?
This would, excuse me, this would still be public land, and my understanding is that there would not be a requirement for mitigation because this land use is compatible with the open space.
Thank you. I forgot to ask Mr. Sarno, do we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee?
We do. Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. This article is necessary should the town decide to use the land as a public water source, which is currently under a conservation restriction, as we already know. And it should be noted that though, should the state legislature remove the restriction, this article further authorizes the Board of Selectmen to grant a license or easement to a third party to develop and operate a public water supply.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, I would like to express some reservations about this article. I want to confess that I'm not fully conversant with Article 97 and all the requirements, but my understanding is that generally, conservation restrictions are granted in perpetuity, and that's a very serious concept and proposition. A lot of landowners actually give up significant benefits to do that. My family protected 100 acres in town, and there are financial implications, as well as the potential, I fear, of having people question whether, in the future, they want to grant easements if they know at some future point in time that use might be changed. And I think what's kind of adding on top of this, I, I do support redevelopment of the Lower Village, but I guess I'm a little concerned about the precedent of removing a protection from land that's conservation land to facilitate development. If truly the developers are interested in working to redevelop their lands, can they not bear the burden of pulling forward a water source? I, I recognize there's been exhaustive work on this. Again, my, my concern is simply about the precedent that we might be setting for, for the future and other conservation restrictions that currently exist and could be granted in the future for the town.
Thank you. I believe Mr. Wrigley had a comment.
As Steve Duncan stated, I've been at this for eight years, a bit over eight years, frustrating eight years. I'm pretty strong when it comes to due diligence, and I'm rather confident that every reasonable, feasible, plausible alternative has been looked at. And to be clear on who will benefit here, it is a few small businesses, taxpayers, who have been in town for some period of time, who provide basic goods and services to the constituents in town, and who are willing to pay to provide a basic, the most basic service, which is potable water. We all need it. The Zone 1 provides an extra layer of protection, in fact, to this conservation land. And we're talking about a well of, that approximates 10,000 gallons per day. This is not a large yield. There are wells, many wells, in this town, many of which I facilitated being put up in Harvard Acres, 178 of them in the last couple of years. You could do no more good for this town than allow these small businesses in our town, providing what few goods and services we have, to draw some water. Once the line, the cost in providing water is determined directly by the distance from the source of water, because the price in laying line, particularly if it's done in the public sector, which makes it prohibitive, is almost $200 a linear foot in place. This site is the only site that is, on a cost benefit, workable for these small businesses to make the water affordable. This is it, folks, or, or these businesses will not be able to develop. The Stowe Pizza House owner has been coming into my office uninterrupted for eight years, desperate to expand his business. All he wants to do is provide a good and service to this town. And I keep shaking my head for eight years. I mean, I'm hiding under my desk at this point, you know? At night, I'd tie him into a line if I could find one, you know? So I understand there's competing interests and needs, but I don't believe, when you weigh in the balance, these other concerns come close, at least in my humble opinion. I mean, people are part of the environment, too. Giving them water to serve our constituents in a small way, and this is all we've got left, really.
Thank you. I've been told that the Selectmen have a recommendation on this article.
Mr. Moderator, may I just make a point of clarification?
Go ahead.
There is no conservation restriction on this parcel. There are different ways of protecting open space. One of them is a conservation restriction, which is what the previous speaker was referring to on her property. On this property, there is no conservation restriction. This was part of a subdivision. As part of the PCD regulatory process, that land had to be preserved as open space. There are a number of different ways that could have been preserved. In this case, the developer transferred this parcel to the Conservation Commission. So the concern raised by the previous speaker is not applicable in this case.
Thank you. Selectmen? Mr. Salvi?
Mr. Moderator, at its meeting last night before town meeting, the Selectmen voted unanimously to support this article. As Bill and Steve have said, this is our best chance right now to start the process for bringing water to Lower Village. This is one step toward removing, toward making it legally possible to do so. And I will just add that at this point, I have to send my wife to go pick up the pizza. So please let me go get a pizza myself.
Thank you. Over here? Yes, sir.
Sandy Taft, 303 Red Acre Road. And Mr. Moderator, I do not want to get between his wife and pizza. The question I have, and it is a question, is this water is to support businesses in the lower area, and I do recall at one point in time, there was talk of a car wash going in where the old gas station was going to be. Is there an ability to control the use, how the water would be utilized? Because this is potable water, drinking water, and I would not like to see Zone 1 water supply to be used for car wash system or some other, perhaps more wasteful, full use of the water. I don't know if anyone can answer that or not.
Ingeborg, or could someone from the Planning Board, would you be able to?
Sorry, I just had to confirm zoning there. The zoning in that part of town would only allow a car wash if it was a grandfathered use, but not currently. Am I, I'm sorry.
So not a new car wash.
I may need to refer this question to a Planning Board member.
Sure. Ms. Kelleher from the Planning-
So the current bylaw does allow car washes by special permit, but the Planning Board has been working over the past year very diligently in reviewing the land uses that are allowed in this district. And one of the main reasons we're doing this is so we will be ready to gear development in the, once we get water, we know the development will come, and we want to gear that development in the right direction. So that may change.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, sir?
It does, and I have a follow-up question, and that would be, is there a way for the Planning Board to do some sort of zoning to explicitly say that you cannot have a heavy water-intensive business in that area, with the concern being that it could compromise using too much of that water?
So, so the question is, can we limit the amount of water use of a business within a district? Can our town planner, Ms. Kelleher?
One sec.
Or could you? Okay.
So the, basically, the Zone 1 area that you see in the circle on the map is very limited, so that limit is, limits the flows that would be allowed. So, for example, this Zone 1 would allow probably 50 to 100,000 gallons?
What was that?
Five to 10, I'm sorry. Five to 10,000 gallons per day. We had a proposal for a 100-seat restaurant, and that would take up 3,500 gallons, right? So, and this is just sort of the south side of Lower Village, so it's a very limited.
Thank you. So it might be physically limited. Mr. Wrigley, would you like to add to that?
Actually, we would control through the lease agreement, any terms and conditions that are reasonable, including setting maximum usage per entity. So we have all the control with regard to the nature and extent of the development, including limiting anyone who ties in to a maximum amount of usage. And the fact is, that Zone 1 is going to drive, once testing is done, what you have for usable gallons per day as rated. And this, this is not a large system. We basically have two or three businesses that we're trying to accommodate here.
Great. That answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Perry?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. First, I'd like to thank the town administrator for his perseverance in working on this project for eight years and finding a solution that doesn't cost the town taxpayers money to implement. I also want to compliment the Conservation Commission for being open-minded and willing to let some space be used for a well. I think the results will be potential water source to the Lower Village and probably more strict, or stricter protection of this land, because once you have a well there, you can't do anything else near this. So thank you to Bill, and thank you to the Conservation Commission.
Thank you. Is there any other debate on this, on the motion under this article? Yes, over here.
Alan Fierce, Red Acre Road. Many of you know that I'm somewhat interested in protecting the environment. And in this case, I've kind of gone over this with a fine-tooth comb. And I just want to say that virtually every environmental issue one could think of is going to be addressed either by the pump testing, by the Conservation Commission, by DEP, by the Selectmen, or by Mr. Wrigley. And I believe at the end of the day, if a well goes in there, we're still going to have all of our conservation and environmental interests protected. I still believe there'll be a trail there, and so I'm supporting this article, and I just wanted people to know that.
Thank you. Any further debate? Seeing none, we can go to a vote. Because this is a change to a conservation restriction, I'm going to require a two-thirds vote. Pardon? Oh, not a conservation restriction, I'm sorry. It's still a two-thirds vote, so I'm going to require a two-thirds vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed, please raise your cards. I see several opposed. I'm going to call it clearly in excess of two-thirds, so the motion under Article 41 passes. Article 42, do we have a motion? Mr. Hawks?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to rezone a portion of land shown on the assessor's map, R4 Parcel 39A, totaling 65,340 square feet, from a recreation conservation district to a residential district. The portion to be rezoned shall be approximately 65,340 square feet, as shown in the plot plan, 215 Harvard Road, Stowe, Massachusetts, by Level Design Group, LLC, dated 7, 2009, for a single-family house to be constructed on the above referenced parcel. In accordance with the Town of Stowe, Massachusetts zoning by law, the portions rezoned shall support one and only one single-family home.
Thank you. Ms. Deludi, do we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this warrant article.
Thank you. Before we take comments from, this is a, a citizen's petition article, before we take comments, do the planning, does the Planning Board have a recommendation?
Hi. The Planning Board does not support this article. We feel that it could set a precedent to open us up to renegotiating other RC, so recreation, conservation land. And we also think that there could be other ways, from a bylaw standpoint, to pursue this, the same result, but not opening ourselves up to that precedent.
Thank you. Would the petitioners or their representative like to come forward and, yes, sir?
At this microphone?
Yes. Or you could come up to the one up here.
Right light.
Yeah.
Good evening. Daniel Campbell, Level Design Group. This article is for-
This article is for the construction of a single-family house associated with Wedgewood Pines Country Club. The RC zoning district doesn't allow a caretaker's house inside of the district. The country club itself was a residentially-zoned parcel. It was rezoned to Recreation/Conservation. Had they seen the need at the time prior to construction of the club for a caretaker's house, they would have left out a parcel of land and left it as residential during the rezoning. This parcel is a frontage parcel on Harvard Road. It is a residentially-zoned street with residences next to the parcel, as well as across the street. There's no implication of spot zoning, and it is zoning similar to the remainder of the area. Really, it's, it's a caretaker's house for the course. That being said, if it's rezoned tonight, the owners of Wedgewood Pines can't just go apply for a building permit. They still have to go back to the planning board and modify their special permit, and then go to the Board of Health for their septic permit as well. So this vote tonight just allows them to continue the process of constructing that house, applying for the permit and any modification necessary to their existing permits, so that that piece of land and that house continue to go with the course in perpetuity.
Thank you. If I could ask you to stay up here if there's any questions. Do we have any, any questions or comments? Mr. Hawks?
Don Hawks, Stars Road. I was wondering, Mr. Moderator, through you, if we might ask the recommendation of town council. From my limited exposure to zoning throughout my career, this would seem to be, to a lay person at least, a prime example of spot zoning, where you are giving specific, specialized treatment to one parcel only.
Thank you. Would town council like to comment on that question?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. With respect to spot zoning, it's a judgment call. It's an issue that comes up, you know it when you see it, is typically what the courts say. If the planning board in its public hearing discussed whether this was or did constitute spot zoning, I think that would be a relevant issue for the planning board to put on the table. I can't dispositively say that it is spot zoning. It is singling out for disparate treatment a particular parcel, but because it's RC to R, it's close. It's a judgment call, and the voters can take that into consideration in making its decision. I will comment, though, on what the previous speaker mentioned in terms of the residential component running with the land. Unless the parcel was subject to a deed restriction such that the dwelling ran with the land, that would not be part of what the voters would be voting on tonight. In other words, by giving this district, this parcel, this special district protection, the parcel could be sold the day after. So while the special permit might control the two uses together, that is not a perpetual restriction against the dwelling. So the voters should be mindful of that, that a rezoning change for a parcel, the parcel will be rezoned accordingly, and a use of that parcel will change over time. So there's no, nothing before the voters this evening that suggests that this parcel that you're being asked to rezone will be perpetually held in the same ownership as the golf course, or would not be separable, severable from the golf course. So with respect to the answer of spot zoning, if it looks like spot zoning, you know it when you see it. Is this singling out for disparate treatment? Yes, but I'm not prepared to say and take this vote away from the voters that this is an illegal spot zoning. So with respect to the selectmen, I think it's a fair question, something that the voters need to consider. Thank you, Mr. J.
Thank you. Any other debate?
Courtney Fritsche, Boxborough Road. My question is following on town council's comment. Is there a way that in this process, it would be possible to restrict the deed on this parcel, so that it would have to follow the golf course, or would have to stay a caretaking house for the, for the golf course, as long as the golf course existed? Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Whit?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The answer to that question is categorically no. You can't negotiate a legislative zoning change with town meeting. So the town meeting's being asked to rezone the parcel, and town meeting determines whether the rezoning comports with the planning board's recommendation, comports with a plan, comports with zoning. Town meeting's not the place to negotiate zoning. So that kind of negotiation is categorically illegal, much like spot zoning would be if we knew it was spot zoning. And that kind of negotiation is called contract zoning, and it's completely impermissible. So, no, the petition stands with what's before the voters, and the voters voted up or down, but can't negotiate this process at the legislative level. The negotiation occurs at the planning board level through the special permit process, but not here. Thank you, Mr. Whit.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, if I may?
Yes, sir.
The only, the only caveat to the rezoning is, right now, this is part of the special permit for the course. This land is not separate from the course. So anything that happens to the land does have to go back for the special permit process, which opens us up to the negotiation with the planning board on what's going to occur with the land.
Thank you. Over here?
Ernie Dodd. I'm speaking for myself as a member of the planning board, not the planning board itself. You heard what we, our position was. But this was first permitted in 1992. It was a residential district at the time. The planning board approved the golf course at that time. In 2000, they came, the applicant came back and, by petition of the town meeting, to convert that from residential property to Recreation/Conservation District, which the town did approve. With, when it was a business, when it was a residential district, they could only put in a 2,500-square-foot clubhouse, I believe. They wanted a larger clubhouse, which the Conservation District allowed them to do, Reservation/Conservation District. They applied for, when the, when it was rezoned, they applied for a 18,000-square-foot clubhouse. That's what it was approved for. And I, there's, they wanted to take off a small section right on Harvard Road, right at the entrance, as a residential lot. It would meet all of our requirements as far as a residential lot if it were rezoned, as an acre and a half, and has the frontage and everything. But I don't see a real need for it. There's other homes in town, if they want to take and buy a home that's close to the golf course, that provide the same function as a home on the golf course itself. There are other Resident, Recreation/Conservation districts in town that would like to do the same thing. There's others, golf courses in town. None of them have a caretaker's cottage on it. And the definition of a caretaker's cottage may not, that I would contemplate, probably wouldn't meet their requirements. A very minimal-sized house, one bedroom, and that would be about it. But I can't support this, and I really can't support a change in the future. I will always feel that is a resident, it's a Recreation/Conservation district, it's there for a purpose, that's what the town voted on, and there's no reason for a change. They can buy another piece of property in Stowe and put their house on it, or rent a house, or buy a house. There's no need to make a change at this time or in the future.
Thank you. I seeing, okay, we have...
Connie Schwartz-Goff, Harvard Road.
Could you, could you turn it down?
You mean, I'm not speaking loud enough? I'm not.
Or just hold it?
Yeah, fine, great.
That's fine.
I have the plan of the lot here. Can you not put it up on the screen so that we can see where the house is going to be situated on this lot? Because according to this plan, which I got from the planning board today, it shows the golf course paved runway, or where you push your carts and drive.
I can't hear you, Connie.
The plan from the planning board on this lot of, how many acres? Two and a half?
It's an acre and a half.
An acre and a half. I don't see where they're going to put the house, because it has a paved golf path right through that lot. And if you could put it up on the screen, it would be very nice to see that.
We don't have it on the computer, so we can't put it up on the screen.
Well, you'll just see it. It's right in the middle of the lot. That may be why the planning board didn't like this. And I walked that lot this afternoon, and for the Conservation's point of view, I did find some nice, rare plants out there.
Thank you. Mr. Vazandola, would you?
Oh, excuse me. It's also near the historical West School Museum, which I helped found.
Thank you.
And that would destroy its view.
Mr. Vazandola, would you like to respond to that, or answer that question?
I'm Mr. Campbell, but yes, the cart path...
Oh, Mr. Campbell.
The cart path running through the parcel is actually intentional. As we said, it's a caretaker's house to go with the golf course as a whole. There is part of a golf green on the back of the lot, and part of the golf cart path does go through the lot, which we submitted to the planning board. It's fully intentional and intended to be a caretaker structure.
Thank you. I see no one else at the microphone. Did you want to respond to any of the other comments that were made?
I mean, my only comment for, for spot zoning is, is that this parcel is directly adjacent to other residential land. It's not rezoning it to something out of character with the neighborhood. It is the, the same zoning as is adjacent to this parcel. When we were looking at the project, yes, it was rezoned from residential to Recreation/Conservation. The golf course was allowed under residential because it was in excess of 75 acres. We were at 157 acres. A portion of this could have been left out of the original vote, but that changed it to RC. As I stated in the beginning, it was not, and that was an oversight. It should have been. We're asking to remove from the RC the single-family house lot, so that they can build a caretaker structure.
Thank you. Over here?
William Byron, Gleesondale Road. I attended the planning board meetings when this discussion was going on this last time around, and I didn't myself care too much for the idea of changing the zoning in any way. However, in the public meeting, the planning board seemed to be putting forth the idea that they could do better for this use by a change in the bylaw to allow a caretaker's house on golf courses, rather than open up the possibility of others coming back trying to change zoning. And so I'm wondering if the planning board has changed its mind about that.
Ms. Clark, it looks like, from the planning board.
This was definitely an idea that was discussed at the planning board meeting, and we did not vote. It was not officially proposed, so we cannot say right now that the planning board would, if we were here talking about that proposal, that we would approve it, because again, it was a discussion, we did not vote on it. The discussion really was an alternative to, again, not opening ourselves up to renegotiating Recreation/Conservation on other parcels. And this was put forward as a discussion point, as an alternative bylaw change in the future that could be considered, that could have the applicant accomplish what they're looking for, but not specifically for one parcel.
Thank you. Over here?
Dwight Seifler, Great Road. I remember a similar article coming before town meeting several years ago. I looked in the warrant, and it said that the plan was dated 2009, so I thought maybe that was it. And I believe we turned it down at that time, based on comments from Mr. Dodd of a very similar nature to the comments that he made tonight. And I was persuaded at that time, and I'm still persuaded, that other properties are available. And there's no real need to take land out of an RC district just to build a house. There's lots of houses in town for sale. I see signs all over.
Thank you, Mr. Seifler. Since I've gotten your name wrong three times, would you like to make any final comments? It looks like...
I, I think my only comment is, the owners are making this proposal. There may be other parcels available in Stowe, but they currently own this parcel. They can build a house on this parcel and be close to their business. Mr. Piterino spends a significant portion of his day and his week at the course, not only for course maintenance, but also for things like fire alarms in the middle of the night. He lives close by. He lives in Acton, but that's still far enough away that he leaves his kids at night, so that he can come and answer a fire alarm call. That most likely is a false alarm, but he still has to get up and travel. If he had the ability literally to take a golf cart out of his back door, go answer that fire alarm call, and go back to sleep and leave his kids for 10 minutes, that's, that's his proposal. The, the reasons are clear from an operational standpoint, but also from a very personal standpoint.
Thank you. Seeing no more debate, we can go to a vote. Because this is a zoning change, it will require a two-thirds vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed, please raise your cards. That is below a majority, so certainly below two-thirds, so I'm going to call that motion as, under Article 43, as failed. At this time, I'm going to step down for a few minutes, and Mr. Horowitz will, will moderate the meeting. This will allow me a break and keep Mr. Horowitz from making any more amendments. So... So I have the information up here. Oh, and let me give you the...
Okay, so we're moving on to Article 44, and we have a motion. Oh, 43, it says 44 here. Gave me a bad script.
I know.
Oh, I see, moved on. So it's the... Okay. So under Article 43, we have a motion by Mr. Kern.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to change Stowe's general bylaw by amending Section 19 of Article 11, the Personnel Administration bylaws, by creating a new paragraph C. That shall read, "The members of what was Employee Clerical Union Local 1156, having now been decertified by the State Department of Labor Relations, shall retain all the individual wage and other compensatory benefits that the town had provided to them by and through express provisions of the labor contract in force and effect at the time of the decertification effective February 21, the year 2013."
We have a motion and a second. Do we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee?
We do, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. The town employees chose to disband their union this past year. This is largely a housekeeping item to ensure those employees continue work, to work under the previously negotiated agreement.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Any questions?
Hi, I'm Mark Jones from Boxborough Road. I would just like to hear a little bit of detail about this. What are the joys and non-joys of either passing or not passing this change to our bylaw?
Mr. Wrigley, can you help us out here?
I'm proud to. I'm the town's chief contract negotiator for union matters, all contract matters. And I'm proud and pleased to say that we may be one of the few communities that's decertifying unions, as opposed to the other way around. I say this because I wish to convey the respect I have for the Clerical Union and its members as well. Clearly, this was a decision they had to make, and I almost botched it for them by getting involved to answer questions. But I, I think there's many benefits for the town in that it's one less union to negotiate with. I did agree, when they were considering decertification, to... I did agree, when they were considering decertification, to ensure that would be brought forward, this article, and I would sponsor and support, that they would lose no benefits through decertification. And I will be considering in the future perhaps some minor changes to the personnel bylaws that affects our non-union personnel. One of the things I've gone to great lengths to do is to treat all our employees the same, union and non-union. There are no separate cost of living allowances for any employee, including myself or union, as opposed to non-union, unlike many towns. The approach that we take on both sides of the table here is we have no union negotiators at the table, no attorneys at the table. When I came here 20 years ago, got rid of our labor attorney, spent a few years in the trenches with the attorneys representing unions, but at this point, we've never reached an impasse. We've never gone to arbitration. Nothing's gone by my desk, and that's as much a credit to every damn employee in this town who's unionized, because I could be managing by grievance, which occurs frequently in many other communities. It's costly. It's lengthy. People dig in. Animosities created. This town is very fortunate. We have none of that, and it's as much a credit to the employees. So I applaud the clerical union for decertifying.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion on this article? I hear and see none, so we can move on to the vote. This requires a majority vote to pass. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. That passes unanimously. We can move on now to Article 44, a motion from Mr. Ryan.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 32B, Section 20, which will allow for the establishment of an Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund, or OPEB.
Second. Okay. Do we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. It's an important step in the process of funding our obligations to retired municipal employees.
Thank you. Is there any discussion, or are there any questions relative to the motion on the floor? Okay, I think we can proceed to... Oh, I spoke too soon? Sorry.
Jim Farah, 218 Hudson Road.
Thank you.
Does that apply to full-time and part-time employees?
Mr. Wrigley?
Jim, this only applies to retirees, and it essentially relates directly to our health care costs. There is a new requirement under the Gatsby rules for accounting in the audit. It now shows what is called an unfunded actuarial accrued liability. And there are new state statutes, some that have been promulgated, others that will be shortly, that are going to require communities to be put on a path of recovering or adding growth to a dedicated account to help pay annually, we pay as we go, to buy down what is being showed for audit purposes as an unfunded liability for health care for our retirees.
I know you've had a town in Stowe, you've got many part-time employees, some have been here 10, 15 years, and we put in four hours, maybe five hours, 10 hours, whenever we're called. And you have people in the winter time, you have part-time employees, and I didn't know whether this helped them out at all.
It doesn't change the status of the function relationship between the town and any of its employees who are retired. It simply now is a process of accounting in annual audits so that we're aware of what our unfunded liability is for health care for retirees.
I don't understand it, but that's okay, Bill.
So the question is, if you work part-time, Mr. Wrigley, can you retire from a part-time job?
The state statutes drive who's eligible for health care. That doesn't change. It simply requires us now to account through our annual audit for our unfunded liability. Every three years, the actuaries take a look at what each community has for unfunded liability and health care costs. They've been doing it for pensions for years, but the new federal accounting standards, Gatsby is now requiring that they account for in the annual audits for retiree health care costs, which is the only other post-employment benefits that we offer. And we're in good stead here, and this account, we're not putting money in it, maybe beginning next year. I'm thinking of putting $50,000 in that account on an annual basis, as we've been doing for our stabilization fund, because we've grown the stabilization fund to around $800,000. 50 grand a year, starting next year for this account.
Are there any other questions or any other discussion? I think then we're ready for the vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article 44, please raise your cards. Okay, all those opposed, I will declare that a unanimous vote in favor of the motion. I think I'm going to get permission to proceed with one more article. Under Article 45, we have a motion from Mr. Salvi, I think.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from MWPAT Harvard acre wells receipts, the sum of $55,834, as additional appropriation to the debt service lineup, to be expended by the treasurer collector for the purpose of repayment of the MWPAT loan.
Thank you. Finance Committee, do you have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee is in favor of acceptance of this article. The article simply transfers the well loaned receipts collected on behalf of the state from the town administered account to the state account.
Thank you. Are there any questions, or is there any discussion under this motion? It looks like people are ready to vote. So all those in favor of the motion under Article 45, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. Again, that is unanimous. That motion passes, and we can move on to Article 46, but we're going to transfer control of the meeting back to the real moderator, your elected moderator, Mr. Walrath.
And Article 46, are we on? Mr. Salvi, I believe. Mr. Burklo, thank you. I have that written wrong.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the overlay surplus account to the Pomposidikit building maintenance account, the sum of $70,000, for the purpose of continuing the basic utility system operations of the Pomposidikit school building.
We have a motion and a second. Finance Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. The ongoing maintenance costs are forecasted at about $85,000 annually, and we have about $15,000 remaining from previous appropriation.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion on this? Yes, sir.
Dave Canastral, Taylor Road. What are we getting for $70,000? Somebody?
Is Craig, or can Mr. Wrigley? Thank you.
If Craig is here, happy to have him answer it. Yes, it's false me. Essentially, we are paying for keeping the oil tanks full and keeping the temperature of the building at a sufficiently high temperature to keep the water from freezing. We're doing repairs and general maintenance on the building, and the purpose here is to continue to keep it fully functional until we can decide what to do with the building. The Oversight Committee that I chair, that we formed, the select that formed a few months ago, we're hopeful to have that decision in the fall about the building, but these funds are there for that purpose.
Thank you, sir. Does that answer the question?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
I remember when we were talking about the new school building, that Pomposidikit was a decrepit, worthless piece of junk, and we couldn't do anything with it. We couldn't sell it. It was worthless. I heard those comments made from the town, and now we've been putting $70,000 a year into it. We rehabilitated Center School, which was an older building, for a considerable amount of money, when we could have rehabilitated the newer building for probably the same money or less and had another school there. So I'm against putting more money into a decrepit, worthless building that we can't sell or do anything with, that we were told.
Thank you.
Unless we're told differently, it's different now, after these couple of years.
Mr. Wrigley?
I won't make this statement with respect to the condition of that school building. I would say that I've found myself disagreeing with the school folks on a number of issues in the last 20 years here, reasonable people can disagree. I don't find the building in the condition that you've described. I don't recall the specific language they used. Having said that, at this point, the Oversight Committee has been given the responsibility to assess the systems of that school and to determine with some deliberate speed, hopefully by the fall, whether that building is serviceable or it isn't, for what purpose, what the costs are, and let the public decide. I'm comfortable being able to bring a cost benefit analysis to the voters in the fall, sufficient enough to make a call on that building as it relates to the potential uses for the project's library and/or community center, or it comes down, or we abandon it and try to sell it, and on a cost benefit produce those buildings somewhere else. I think we can do all of that by fall. But for short money, keeping it from further disrepair, from lack of attention, meaning shut the water down, the system dries out, turning the heat off, nothing good comes from that, and whatever value it has now, little or great, it decreases if we just ignore it.
Thank you. Are there any further discussion on the motion under Article 46? Seeing none, vote requires a majority vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed? I see one opposed. I'll call it clearly a majority, nearly unanimous, so the motion under Article 46 passes. Article 47, Mr. Hawkes.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the Emerson Home Care account to the Council on Aging expense account, the sum of $3,986, for the purpose of contracting for services of a social worker.
We have a motion and a second. I think Ms. Galudi?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article.
Thank you. Do we have any debate on the motion under Article 47? Mr. Hawkes? No? No? Oh, okay. Seeing none, this requires a majority vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. Any opposed, please raise your cards. I will call that unanimously in favor. The motion passes. Article 48, Holiday Decorations and Lighting Fund. Mr. Kern, I think, do you have that?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $4,000 to be expended by the Highway Department for the purpose of purchasing and installing holiday decorations and lights on municipal properties.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Dumka, I think, Ms. Galudi?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article.
Thank you. Debate?
Mr. Moderator, Margie Lynch, Boxborough Road. I was curious as to whether the Highway Department intends to purchase LED holiday lights. They offer a very significant electricity savings that could be realized in the operational expenses.
Thank you. Is Mr. Clayton here tonight? If not, could Mr. Wrigley answer that?
Any other question but that one? I was prepared to answer. I'm uncertain as to the specific light that they'll use, but I'm sure they'll do a bang-up job. Or I'll take back the money.
Any other debate? This requires a majority vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed, please raise your cards. I see a few opposed, but it is clearly a majority in favor, so I will say the motion under Article 48 passes. Article 49.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $600 to be expended under the direction of the Superintendent of Streets to purchase a reusable over-the-road banner to be used every year to announce the annual Stowe cleanup in order to ensure a greater level of participation and more attractive community to live and work.
Thank you. Finance Committee, Mr. Walrath?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee is in favor of acceptance of this article.
Thank you. Debate? Yes, sir. Over here.
Not a debate, but an endorsement. My name is Sandy Taft, 303 Redacre Road, and I just wanted to share a little background on the cleanup. This past year was our fifth year, Mr. Moderator, with our cleanup, and it's been pulled together by a number of volunteers throughout the town. As I mentioned, it began five years ago with myself and my wife Tara Taft, and Chris Spear, and Maria Giles, and Jean Lynch, and Chris, no, Jean, can't read the last name, apologies. In any event, we've worked very closely with the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, a number of organizations within the town, and it's been a complete volunteer organization, which really hasn't had any funding at all. And this is, I believe, with having a sign, is a more efficient way to have a more successful voluntary cleanup. We've had wonderful donation from the Stowe Ace Hardware with some gloves. The police department's helped us to obtain the yellow garbage bags, and the Friends of Troop Ron and the Boy Scouts have been helpful in terms of making sure we have a dry place to stand under when it's a rainy weekend. It's been a very successful event with a number of people ranging from 100 to 160 over the last five years, and I think having a banner like this is going to even do more so in terms of bringing people out. Mike Clayton also in the Highway Department have been extremely supportive with this program as well, and I was pleased that the Highway Department thought that this made sense in terms of getting the word out as well. So I hope all of you will go along with this vote, and I'd also like to thank all of you that have participated in the cleanup in the past. Thank you very much. And those of you that have not, I hope you take advantage of it in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further debate?
Mr. Moderator, Steve Jelinek, 88 PBD Drive. I would like the town, or I would like personally thank Mr. Taft for his efforts on this regard. This is exactly the kind of thing that makes a community, or makes a town a community. Sandy, my hands off to you. Great job. Thank you.
So before we take a vote, just a minor piece of information. When I call this debate, that's what we're doing here. When I tapped my gavel earlier, that's what we call discussion, and we try to dissuade that here. We're trying to do what's called formal debate, which isn't arguing with each other. It's politely debating. Anyways, this requires a majority vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed? I see a handful. It's clearly a majority, so I will declare the motion under Article 49 passing by majority vote. Article 50.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of $50,000 to be added to the stabilization fund.
We have a motion and a second. Finance Committee, please.
Finance Committee recommends approval of this article.
Thank you. Any debate on the motion under Article 50? Seeing none, this requires a two-thirds vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed, please raise your cards. I will... I will call that unanimously in favor, so the motion under Article 50 passes. Article 51. Mr. Burklo?
Mr. Moderator, I moved that the town vote to authorize the Board of Assessors to use the sum of money from available funds in the hands of the treasurer collector in reducing the tax rate, balancing the budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2013, and ending June 30th, 2014, fiscal year 14. Or I'm moving no action on Article number 51.
Thank you. I heard a motion for no action under Article 51. I was a little confused. Peter, Finance Committee, want to make a comment on that?
Finance Committee is definitely in favor of a balanced budget.
Thank you. No action requires a majority vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. Any opposed, please raise your cards. I see one, two opposed, I'll call that clearly a majority, the motion under Article 51 passes, no action, is no action. Article 52.
Mr. Moderator, I move no action on the Article 52.
We have a motion and a second for no action on Article 52. Does anyone have a question why? Why? Okay, do we have, the town clerk would like to address why. Could we pass up a microphone, Tom?
This article, there still will be a June 25th town election, but it'll be a special election. The annual meeting has to dissolve tonight in order to swear in the officials that were elected on April 30th, per charter. So we will still have a June 30th election and a ballot question, and the selectmen will have a warrant to do that, but we need to dissolve our meeting tonight, and that's no action on the election. What did I say, the 25th? 30? It's 25th.
So the answer is, people like myself and Mr. Kern and others that were elected last Tuesday would have to wait a month to get sworn in. Yes, sir?
Just a quick question, Dave Kennestral, Taylor Road again. On question one, which is, we voted, well, people voted for the amendment last night to take it off the ballot, take it out of the hands of the voters, is that still going to be on the ballot? So if the town comes all over, if people come along and for overwhelming majority vote against it, putting this money in there, who's going to tell them that their vote doesn't count?
Mr. Wrigley, you looked like you were getting ready to answer that, or would you like?
The first part of that question I could answer. Last night's vote does not render null and void an affirmative simple majority vote at the ballot, which is what I'm encouraging folks, and hope they would, vote affirmatively, so that it would be debt-excluded. If it doesn't pass, then essentially, the vote to borrow the money to purchase the property will have, I'll have to find the annual debt payment within the operating budget. But that vote is still an active vote on the 25th, and I would ask that everybody vote to pass the debt exclusion.
Thank you. So is that clear? Yep. Any other debate on no action on Article 52 for the town election? Good, no action is a majority vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. Any opposed, please raise your cards. I'll call that unanimously in favor of no action on Article 52. Next. I don't think I had someone on the list. Would anyone from the selectmen care to make a motion? I think I had it as, I think it's listed as Article 53, if there's a, Mr. Kern?
Mr. Moderator, I moved to dissolve the town meeting.
We have a motion to dissolve, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed? I'll call that unanimously in favor of dissolving this meeting. Thank you, everyone, for coming, and thanks for the volunteers who helped.